Let us begin the meeting.
Hand it over to the mayor to begin.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the city commission meeting, October 6th of 2020. If I could please ask everybody to rise so we can do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We're just saying, one nation, under God, justice for all.
Please be seated. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Here, I am having some video problems, I don't know why, only, can you hear me though?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd rather, I'd rather see you than hear you, but that's okay.
Oh, you know, I won't even comment on that, mayor, but thank you for the love, thank you for the love.
It was meant in the kindest of ways.
Oh, of course it is, of course it is. For some reason, I'll figure out, I don't know what's going on with the video, but it's just not working, okay.
Okay.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Here.
Commissioner Sorensen. Mayor Trentalis.
Here, thank you so much. So, the city of Fort Lauderdale will be hosting its meetings in a virtual format until further notice. The public can listen to and view the virtual meetings at fortlauderdale.gov/FLTV and on youtube.com/cityoffortlauderdale as well as on Comcast channel 78 and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. For those who want to speak on an agenda item and have not already signed up to do so, please visit www.fortlauderdale.gov/v-as in Victor, c-meetings in order to sign up. To help ensure the same decorum as our in-person meetings, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting broadcast on FLTV, YouTube, Comcast, or AT&amp;T if you're watching simultaneously in order to avoid delays with the broadcast. I will call upon you when it is your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers in the listen-only mode and you will be unmuted to speak when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected to listen to the remainder of the meeting. So, we have a couple of agenda announcements, we have a resolution approving amended consent order, and we have a change in CP6, exhibit two of the memo has been updated to add a section L. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
Mayor, before you move on, I need to add the walk-on item as well.
I'm sorry?
He did announce it?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Got it, okay, thank you, I apologize.
Moved.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the minutes have, minutes and the agenda have both been approved. Now, it is, it is my great honor and privilege to be able to, to take the first presentation tonight, and this presentation is in recognition of the Republic of China, known as Taiwan, on recognizing its 109th National Day, October 10th, 2020. Do we have a representative from the Republic of Taiwan here tonight?
Thank you.
Yes, there you are, how are you tonight?
Thank you, mayor, yeah.
So, I have the, I have this proclamation which I would like to read from the office of the mayor of the city of Fort Lauderdale, "Whereas the Republic of China, Taiwan, observes the 109th National Day on October 10th, 2020. And whereas since the establishment of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami in 1988 and the subsequent establishment of the sister state relations between the state of Florida and Taiwan in 1992, the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami has tirelessly worked to support bilateral economic, educational, and cultural relations. And whereas the United States and Taiwan have maintained and enhanced a close friendship over the decades encompassing commercial, cultural, and other interactions based on the 1979 Taiwan's Relation Act, the cornerstone of the US-Republic of China ties which celebrate its 41st year of enactment in this year of 2020. And whereas recognizing that Taiwan is the ninth largest trading partner with the United States and the 10th largest export market in the world for US goods, as well as Florida's sixth largest market in Asia, garnering the Sunshine State more than 7,850 jobs and almost $1 billion in trade and investment ties in 2018, establishing a bilateral trade agreement, the BTA, between the US and Taiwan to further strengthen trade and economic ties is welcome. And whereas to assist in the fight against the COVID-19 pandemic, the government and people of Taiwan donated more than 11.75 million medical masks to the United States through federal and local governments, including our own, 420,000 of which were donated in Florida. And whereas Taiwan's meaningful participation in international organizations, including the International Civil Aviation Organization, the ICAO, World Health Organization, the WHO, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, the UNFCCC, and the International Criminal Police Organization, known as Interpol, would benefit regional development, peace, and prosperity. And whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale supports Taiwan's aspirations to further contribute to international development and to promote peace and prosperity and cherishes its traditional and cordial sister city relations with Taiwan with our sister city Kaohsiung, which we had the opportunity to meet and, and visit two years ago. And finally, the city of Fort Lauderdale recognizes Taiwan's efforts to meaningfully participate in global affairs and will continue to support its mission of economic liberalization, political democratization, and significant participation in the international arena. Now therefore, we as the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2020 as the Republic of China, Taiwan Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale and encourage everyone to join us in congratulating the Republic of China on this milestone and recognize its achievements with our admiration and appreciation. Sign, this will, will, will be the 10th day of October 2020 by myself, Mayor Dean J. Trentalis. Thank you so much, do you have a few words you'd like to share with us?
Yeah, thank you so much, yeah, good evening, that Mayor Trentalis and all the commissioners, it's my pleasure to be with you this evening and to have this opportunity to speak on behalf of my government of Taiwan. This proclamation is not only my personal honor, but the honor for the government and the people of Taiwan. I, I, on behalf of Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami, I appreciate your friendship and the support. The pandemic COVID-19 is the historical crisis for the global people and the whole world, including Florida. And the whole world, including Florida, got a severe hit caused by the COVID coronavirus. Virus knows no boundary, knows no border, we have to work together to collaborate with each other to curb the spread of COVID-19. And Florida is Taiwan's sister state. Fort Lauderdale, as Mayor just mentioned, that Fort Lauderdale is the sister city of Kaohsiung, Taiwan. Both of us have maintained a close and robust relationship. In order to help Fort Lauderdale fight the novel coronavirus, we donated the protection gear of medical face masks to the city government. We hope that the mask we donated will help the first responders combat the virus and hope the pandemic will subside, our daily life will go back to normal soon. Thank you so much, I wish you good health and happiness. Appreciate your friendship.
Thank you for participating in our meeting tonight, I'm sorry we can't be here in person.
Yes.
We have a lot to learn from the practices that you have followed in order to suppress the spread of the virus and we thank you for everything you've contributed to our community to help us get through this, this pandemic. So, thank you once again, we appreciate you.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, thank you everyone, thank you, have a good night, thank you.
We'll send the hard copy to your office.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our next presentation will be by Commissioner Moritas, who will be, who will present a proclamation regarding some neighbors of ours in our community, Commissioner Moritas.
Thank you, mayor, for recognizing me, and I'd like to see if Mr. Hugh Williams is joining us tonight from Mayfair Cleaners. If not, he may be listening, he may not be.
Is he on the, is he on the line?
It was my understanding he was going to be, so I'll wait one second to see if I see anything.
We have a crack team here.
Crack team, okay, I'll go ahead and get started, and if he does join us, I'll recognize him at the end. Okay, so, this is presented to Hugh Williams in recognition of outstanding contributions to the Bayview Elementary PTA. Whereas Hugh Williams, the owner of Mayfair Cleaners located at 2760 East Oakland Park Boulevard in the city of Fort Lauderdale, whereas even though his business suffered financial hardship during the COVID-19 pandemic, Hugh Williams went above and beyond to assist the Bayview Elementary PTA with their annual school uniform collection drive. And whereas the pandemic-related restrictions that were in place at the end of the 2019-20 school year meant that Bayview Elementary PTA would be unable to collect pre-loved school uniforms and wash and save them for the return to school. Whereas Hugh Williams came to the rescue of the Bayview Elementary PTA by offering to use Mayfair Cleaners as a central drop-off location available to families that wanted to donate uniforms. In addition, he offered to clean, organize, and store the uniforms for the new school year. Whereas the partnership with Mayfair Cleaners enabled the Bayview Elementary PTA to conduct its annual drive, gently-used uniforms were offered to parents in exchange for a small donation to the PTA, which helped many families obtain low-cost school uniforms for their children. Whereas in challenging times like these, the selfless assistance provided by Hugh Williams and Mayfair Cleaners represented a shining example of what giving back to the community truly means. Whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale commends Hugh Williams for exceeding expectation, exemplifying altruism, and going the extra mile to make a difference in the lives of students and families in our community. Now therefore, we as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2020 as Hugh Williams and Mayfair Cleaners Day. And the city of Fort Lauderdale encourage all citizens to join with us to thank him for his exemplary commitment, dedication, contributions, and support of education in the Bayview Elementary PTA. Dated the 6th day of October 2020, signed our mayor, Dean J. Trentalis. So, thank you, mayor, I'm not sure if I see him, but we will make sure to drop off, drop off the proclamation tomorrow at his business.
Alright, great, thank you so much, Commissioner. Okay, so, moving forward, we now move on to what's called the Consent Agenda. And for those of you who are for, for the first time participating in a city commission meeting, what that means is that there are a number of items that are, that need the approval of the city commission that don't normally require a lot of discussion and that are put on, on what's called the Consent Agenda. These items are on the city commission agenda and they will not be discussed unless a commissioner specifically requests that they be polled, and at that time, public, the public will be allowed to comment on, on that particular item. If the item is not polled, then before we move on to approve the Consent Agenda, we will ask a member of the public to be able to speak, if anyone wants to speak on any specific Consent Agenda item, and that will be the time in which you will be able to speak if it has not been pulled. So, right now, I'm going to ask the commissioners, start with you, Commissioner Moritas, do you have any Consent Agenda items that you would like to pull?
Yes, CP3. Correct.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. CR11.
And that is it?
That's it.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
None, thank you.
None? And Commissioner Sorenson?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we have CP3 and CR11. Now, there are people who have signed up to speak for some of the other ones, and...
Mayor?
Yes.
Did we do the minutes in the agenda? Because I did have a couple of corrections on the minutes, but did we skip that or is that still coming?
No, we actually did approve that.
I'm sorry, we did?
In fact, you voted for it.
Oh, my God, don't, you know, that's because I'm struggling with my video, so I'm a little distracted. Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Were there some words that didn't have correct punctuation or something?
Well, no, actually, but there was some, well, for instance, on one of the budget meetings, it kept saying eagle trace for the development, but it's actually regal trace, you know, things like that. But I can get with the, I can get with the city clerk on that, if that's okay.
It's just a typographical error. You can speak with the city clerk regarding that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is your audio and video working okay now?
The audio is, but for some reason, I don't know, I keep hitting start video, and then I just get, on my end, I just see a blank screen. I don't know what you see, but I just see a blank screen even when I keep hitting start video, so I don't know what the issue is, but whatever. Technology.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not missing anything. It's only me up here. So, okay, so we have a number of people who have signed up to speak on the Consent Agenda items. We have someone, Andrew Shine, who wanted to speak on CM5, but only to re-answer questions, and there are no questions, so we'll put that over there. We have CR3, Michael Moskowitz. You had signed up to speak. Mike, are you there?
Only to answer questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that is, we'll put that over there. CR4, Tam English, only to answer questions. Tam?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so move that over there. CR5, Ken Krasnov, it's probably the same thing, only to answer questions. CR10, Jenny Mora-Hone. Is that just to answer questions? Same with John Millage, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, so...
Can you bring me the extension cord?
Did you want me to bring an extension cord, Vice?
Steve, mute yourself.
I did just mute myself. I'm just struggling with my technology. I'm trying a lot of options.
Guess what? Your audio is working.
Bear with me, I'm trying a lot of options here. I'm a senior citizen, thank you.
Yeah.
Try your iPhone. Hang up and call back.
Maybe you should move into memory care, I don't know. Anyway. Okay. On CR11, Vice Mayor, you asked to pull that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions, Chris, especially, let's see, on, on letter O.
That's ridiculous. Okay, hang on one second, I was not taking them in the right order, so we're going to hear this one right now, let me go to O. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I did want to just get some answers to this, and this is regarding the NPO ILA that we had, that we did cancel in the budget, and then we have this item here, obviously it's pretty much a wash in terms of the funding, so that we can hire the folks that we need. But when I look at the, when I look at the ILA that we had with the NPO, and I think everyone had good intentions, but we actually paid $225,000 in startup costs, and I was just wondering, are we able to recoup any of that? Also, the agreement says that the city has to pay a demobilization cost, and I don't know, I don't see a dollar amount in there. I don't know if that's there. I know we've also paid roughly $321,000 for service funds, so we've definitely spent some money in the seven months that we had this ILA, but I am concerned about some of those startup costs that were our responsibility and also the demobilization costs, which in the contract actually says not to exceed one full year's payment. So I'm just concerned about those dollars, and what is our position on that? And do we have any recourse to recoup any of those funds that we spent? And then obviously, we sort of got shut down by the county saying that this is a conflict of interest. Can you help me understand how we're doing with that?
I can't. Excuse me, yes, I can. The one, but let me go ahead and go to Ben Rogers first, he's been the closest to this, as we've been trying to leverage the dollars that we've invested into that agreement in the short period of time that we had it. So, Ben, can you walk us through the work you've done on that project?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ben Rogers, Transcription Mobility. Vice Mayor Glassman, a lot of the startup cost was actually the onboarding process. So if you remember, we entered into the agreement in November, but we had kind of a buildup period where the NPO was hiring staff and getting them onboarded, familiar with projects, and actually doing work from November until March. And so a lot of that, those funding, went to the salaries of those employees to get them up to speed, familiar with the projects, and to start the work right on day one. That's where the demobilization, we've been in contact with the NPO, and we're working on all the audit and reconciling of the finances right now. I don't have an answer for you on a dollar figure or what it means at this point, but we are in active conversation.
Okay, so are you anticipating any kind of demobilization cost that we would be incurring?
Yeah, I think I'd have to defer to the city attorney on the word demobilization. I think it has different definitions for different people. I think the intent was that if the NPO leased a building, or bought a software, or invested in this program with an overhead cost, that it would be something that, you know, we would figure out how to make them whole. Because of the short term of the agreement, I don't think that they really experienced any of those factors. So I don't think that we'll have any demobilization costs, but we're working through that right now.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure, and then again, I mean, even the startup cost, I'm just concerned that, you know, due to no fault of our own, this agreement is ending. And, you know, whether you want to say it's the county or the NPO not able to fulfill, you know, the agreement, I just don't think that any of this is on us. So I just don't want to see us have to pay for something that was just totally out of our control, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely, and I'll continue to work on it and report back to the city manager, and hopefully provide an update, some clarity for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Ben. I'm good, Mayor, I can, I can move the item.
Would you like to introduce the item?
Certainly, thank you.
Please call the roll.
I gotta get to it real quick, Mayor.
This is CR11.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale's FY 2021 final all-funds budget and personnel complement for the fiscal year beginning on October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021 by appropriating and transferring funds and adding three full-time positions respectively as set forth in City Commission Agenda Memo #20-0685, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale's final FY 2021/FY 2025 Community Investment Plan for the fiscal years beginning on October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2025 by appropriating funds as set forth in this in-city Commission Agenda Memo #20-0685, and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and CR11 is approved. Move on to CP3.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over this briefly. You all know I discuss water, all things water, up here in District 1, and Chris, help me and make sure I'm understanding backflows correctly, but a lot of my residents up in District 1 have installed a separate irrigation line over the years to help lower the cost of their water bill, since you are not charged on sewer for your irrigation line, it makes your water bill reasonable. So because of that, like I said, we've been doing it for a while, I don't know, Chris, probably 30 years. Now it looks like maybe there was an opinion issued a couple of years ago by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that these irrigation lines that people already installed now need to have a backflow installed, also to prevent, you know, any possible contamination, not that it's a guarantee that there's going to be a contamination, but there could be if the irrigation line, the pressure got lower, or something like that. My concern with it, my concern really up here in this district and with other people I've talked to also, is it would seem like there would be some kind of grandfathering in of this, this, I don't even know if it's an ordinance. I mean, right now, I know we're talking about just a management system, but to me, it seems like the management system is going to hound those of us a little bit more who have an irrigation line, who haven't installed the backflow. Because I know right now, we get the survey that says, tell us about your backflow, and you know, you turn it in or you don't, but, you know, the backflow's pretty big, so it sticks out in your lawn, and people are kind of upset that we already had to spend extra money to install a separate irrigation line to get a reasonable water bill, and now we have to go through this extra step, which is at least $1,000, to now install a backflow. So my question is, is it mandatory to install a backflow? I just, I need that answer first.
Sure, so Commissioner, we've got a couple of our experts on the call, we've got people from Nancy's group, I think I see Todd Heichu, Larry Teach, could I invite them to the meeting,
Good evening, Chris, this is Todd.
Todd, can you, can you take a first stab at the Commissioner's question with a response?
Sure, absolutely. Dedicated irrigation service connections on a residential property as well as non-residential, they are required to have backflow protection.
Hold on one second, is this, is it just the irrigation line? Is that what you said, on a residential property?
Correct. A dedicated irrigation line, whether it's residential or non-residential, would require a backflow protection.
Okay, Todd, do you have that, is this the City of Fort Lauderdale's ordinance? Or is this something from the DPA, Florida Department of Environmental Protection?
The Florida Department of Environmental Protection, they updated their ordinance or their rules or statute back in the 2014 timeframe, and then we pre-modaled the state ordinance, so it is codified in our city ordinance as well, that language.
Okay, so we codified it as a city back in 2014, saying that residents had to have a backflow on their irrigation line.
On their dedicated irrigation line, correct.
Okay, now, does Broward County, I thought their ordinance was only on commercial properties and not on individual homeowners. I don't know, you might not know that, but maybe it doesn't matter for this conversation, so, okay. So we did codify it, so it was my understanding, I know when the state came out with this, issued this communication, you know, at the time, my husband was the state representative, and he did work with the current mayor and current city manager, and issued a letter from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection saying that it wasn't mandatory, and it was up to the cities to determine what they wanted to do moving forward, and also, if we wanted to grandfather in, those are the homes that had already dug up their house once to install this irrigation line. So I'd probably like to see maybe a little bit more, Chris, from the, you know, Florida DEP. I, I mean, I can't, I can't support this, because, I'm going to tell you why I can't support it. Because our water rate structure plays games with the sewer, if we had a cap, let's say, at 10,000 gallons, you didn't pay sewer on your utilities, your water bill, we wouldn't have had to go through the hoops of putting in a separate irrigation line to begin with. But because we set our water rate the way we did, however many years ago, it made, you know, 30% of us in the city, I believe, go install this irrigation line, we would have solved the problem by just capping the sewer max at the gallons, but I understand we also need a conservation water rate. So I get that, like, we want people to conserve water, and therefore, that's why we came up with this. So it's frustrating that we, A, had to install separate irrigation lines, and now it's frustrating, B, that we're making, I mean, the separate irrigation line, it could be like $3,000 or $4,000. Now we're saying, now you have to go back, dig up your lawn again, install a major trip hazard, it's at least 12 inches high, on your front lawn, and, and then we're going to regulate you every year in our database, and charge you another $45 for it. So it's just not going over well for those of us who have the irrigation line. Just because I have this conversation on a regular basis with the prior, with the prior state rep, I probably really want to see that language, that statue again, that says we have to do it, because that was not the interpretation that he issued to the city when it came out. And I know it, I just think it should be grandfathered in or something, and, and it's, like I said, it's frustrating that we even had to install this separate irrigation line to begin with. I don't know.
Commissioner, what is it that you're not supporting here? Because this is, this is to hire a company to manage a system.
I don't, or the system, and I don't want it to be managed. That's what I don't support.
The system is already in place.
It's not, not everybody does it. You know, I know many people that have an irrigation line, I'm sorry, that don't have the backflows installed, because they were frustrated about this, you know, four years ago when it came out.
But this is not a, this is not a resolution whether or not we should have backflow systems. This is a, this is a, this is a resolution whether or not to hire this company to monitor the proper usage of the backflow systems.
I don't want to, I don't want to monitor something I don't support.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't support, I don't...
Would someone else like to introduce the resolution, then?
I quite want to say something, and I, I'm sorry, I'm sounding a little crazy on this, I mean, it's, it is a little crazy on this whole issue. Go ahead, Josh.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I think, Commissioner Moritas, you are right about the single-family homes being given some exemption. The issue here is what they refer to as the cross-contamination, and that happens when you got two issues, either you are using separate irrigation, or you are using what is called the reclaimed or the reused water. It is because of those reasons that they do not quite fall in a single-family situation where there is a single meter, and therefore, you can potentially get the exemption. So that's issue number one. Issue number two is that in the larger context, that because failures may happen, and because our system is so brittle, that we lose the water pressure, you have got a much higher possibility of contamination. So if that happens, what it is going to do is that we are going to be in violation of the Florida Administrative Code that requires the purveyor of the water supply to protect the system. So you are absolutely right, that was the, that was the flexibility given to the single-family home under those conditions, and because we do not have those conditions, or we do not have those conditions, that's what makes it complicated. But we'll be happy, I mean, I will be definitely happy to go and revisit this, but I can tell you that even if you did have that exemption, I would be, as your utilities director, I'll be very reluctant... director, I'll be very reluctant, given the fact that our pipes keep breaking and there is a higher potential of pressure losing and sucking back into the system and contaminating everything.
Like I said, I'm, my biggest frustration is we did not do a good job setting our water rates. So now we made residents go out and spend all this extra money, all this extra time and effort with this stupid irrigation line, and now we have to do something else for the irrigation line, which it's just, we, our water rate structure is just, it's a mess.
Okay. All right. Would someone else like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's a motion? I'm sorry, it's a motion.
Move.
Commissioner Sorenson, you move the item?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the motion is approved. Finally, on CP6, Robin Chiarelli, are you here just to answer questions or did you want to speak on the item? Robin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. Good evening.
I am pres, good evening. I'm present just to answer questions if they should arise.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Those are all the items that were pulled or people wanted to speak on. So may I hear a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda items?
Moved.
Second.
Move the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the rest of the consent agenda items have now been approved. Moving on to motions. M1, motion approving a settlement agreement and release between the City of Fort Lauderdale and. And CFS Funeral Services, Inc. Any questions? If there are none, would someone please move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Hello?
Second.
Second. There be no further discussion, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. The motion's approved. I'm happy we're putting this whole relationship behind us. It's been a disaster. Thank you, Chris, and your staff for, and Alan, for bringing this to a conclusion. M2, motion approving a services agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency. I have one person, I have a couple of people who signed up to speak on this. Okay, we have Brian Powell. Brian, are you there? Brian Powell?
I do not see that name, Mayor.
You do not see the name? Okay. How about Fidel Goldson? Fidel? Fidel Goldson?
I do not see that name either, Mayor.
Okay. How about Shakela Carter?
I don't see that name either, Mayor.
So Brian Powell, Fidel Goldson, or Shakela Carter, they're all with the Junie Investment Company. Those are the people that we, they were on the CRA. Maybe they meant to speak this afternoon.
They may have meant to speak this afternoon.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to move the item?
Move.
Then move. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The move in the seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the motion is approved. R1, appointment of board and committee members. Would you like to please read the names into the record?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, for the October 20th resolution, there's a few consensus appointments that nominations have been made. Two on the Citizens Committee of Recognition, Mary Furtig was nominated by both Commissioner Sorenson and Vice Mayor Glassman. And Michael Albeda was also nominated for this consensus appointment by both Commissioner Sorenson and Vice Mayor Glassman. I don't think we've ever had a situation where a board member has been nominated by two commissioners.
Two outstanding commissioners.
So I don't know if, if we. If we.
You definitely stand out, yes.
Thank you.
So the question is, for the resolution, when we actually do it for the next meeting and read that resolution, we've never had this. So should we put both commissioners on as nominating or should we decide on one?
Does it matter?
I don't believe it does, unless.
I'm happy to defer to the, the more senior commissioner in experience and wisdom.
Let's just split it. You take one, I take one.
Deal. Deal. Your choice, your choice, Vice Mayor.
So who are the two again? Not the commissioners, the selections?
Mary Furtig and Michael Albeda.
Okay. So, so Ben, you take Mary Furtig and, and Steve, you take Michael Albeda.
That's fine.
Yeah. Thank you. And then for the Community Services Board, there is a seat for a Broward County employee involved in the administration of Ryan White funds. And we have a, a Shakira, Shakira Scott has agreed to do this and she fits those, that mandatory category because our board member that's currently in that seat will be terming out soon. So if you want to move ahead with that, her nomination would start January 8th, 2021.
Is that, is that okay? Which committee is that?
This is the Community Services Board.
Community Services.
So we were provided the name of Shakira Scott, and she's a Broward County Project Coordinator that would fit into that category. We've already reached out.
Okay.
And then for individual nominations for the October 20th resolution, Commissioner Moritas has nominated for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Ryan Whiplinger. Then for tonight's resolution, for the Aviation Advisory Board, we have Mark Volcek nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Cemetery System Board of Trustees, John Lilly nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Citizens Police Review Board, Mark Dickerman nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Community Appearance Board, Joanne Robinson nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And Ed Murphy, also nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Community Services Board, Tara Sickler nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Complete Count Advisory Committee, Luke Harrigan nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Education Advisor Board, Yolanda Francis nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. And April Jeff nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Marine Advisor Board, Robin Chiarelli nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Parks, Rec and Beaches Board, Mariana Seiler nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Joanne Smith nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. Deborah Rosenbaum nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman. Public Art and Placement Advisor Board, Sarah Glass nominated by Commissioner Sorenson. And Sustainability Advisor Board, Carol Tamberry nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. So we just need our resolution to be introduced.
Would someone like to please introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission, the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating applicable board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of, Commissioner McKenzie.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those appointments are now approved by the City Commission. Congratulations and thank you all for agreeing to commit your time and efforts to improving our city. Thank you. R2, this is a resolution providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualified project submitted as an unsolicited proposal from One Stop FTL LLC pursuant to Florida Statute 255.065. I have a number of people who've signed up to speak. Actually, three people signed up to speak. Alan, this isn't a situation where there's a presentation, is there? It's just comments.
This is right, correct.
Okay. So the first person who signed up is Stephanie Toothaker. Stephanie, you on the line?
Yes, Mayor, this is Stephanie Toothaker on behalf of One Stop FTL.
Great.
We are here just to answer questions, should you have any? We appreciate your interest.
Okay. We may. So stand by and stand back. Sorry. I'm sorry. Kelly Shanley? Are you just there for, here for questions?
I'm here to just add a couple of comments, actually.
Please, go ahead. You have three minutes. Please go ahead.
And I'm just recovering from laughing at your last joke there, so.
I'm sorry.
So, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Kelly Shanley, I'm the President and CEO of the Broward Center for Performing Arts. And as you all know, I've expressed some concerns about this project and really, without any sort of presentation or anything, I feel awkward commenting on it. But I, I can report that I did have a conversation with a representative from the project yesterday. And they made it very clear that this project was never intended to have seating as part of the project and that the small number of seats that they need to address VIP programs and things like that that are part of what they're proposing will certainly meet our concerns about the type of venue that it's going to be. So that certainly was our greatest concern about this venue, and I was happy to have that clarity yesterday. And so we're eager to just see how this project progresses and remain involved to see that, that's how the project turns out if it is indeed moving forward. So appreciate the time, but that's, those are my only comments at this point.
Okay. Well, let me ask you a question then.
Sure.
So, let me just stop the clock. Okay. So what you're saying is that you did, you have, you have expressed concerns in the past regarding this proposal. And I do recall you're saying that the only real concern that you had was the nature of the entertainment, whether it was a stand-up facility or it had seating for its, for its guests. And you're indicating tonight that you're understanding that this is mostly a stand-up venue, and so you're, you don't have any, any other objections to this proposal?
They've made it clear that it is a stand-up venue. I'll, to clarify on their behalf, and you'd have to ask them, but they also made it clear that they do need some seats for some types of their program. But they're willing to do that in a manner that's consistent with addressing our concerns, and they're willing to make that part of their agreement with the city and involve us in that process. So that was really important for me to know. And yes, it addresses our primary concern with the project.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you so much. Next person is. I'm sorry. Yes, Commissioner?
All right, Ben, I just want to ask Kelly, Kelly, thanks. And, you know, you and I have talked about this in the past. So Kelly, what I'm hearing you say is a level of comfort when you think about Broward Center but, and also Parker Playhouse? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah. I mean, there's going to be an impact there, but, you know, these guys are currently operating Revolution that lives in our entertainment ecosystem here. And I think for them to build just, you know, a slightly larger club that has more amenities and more resources and more to offer, I don't think, as long as it remains a stand-up venue, that it would impact Parker or Broward in a significant way.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks.
Alan, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to caution going forward on comments that we cannot speak about specifics of this project. That needs to remain exempt under the statute, so we can't go into details regarding the project.
Okay. We're being admonished not to go into any real detail on this.
Yeah, I apologize if I dragged you into that space. I, I, Mayor, if I could add just one more thing, I want to thank you particularly for promoting the Save Our Stages Act, which did pass through the House bill and will help venues like the Broward Center and Revolution and others in our community if it indeed manages to pass at some point in the future. So I appreciate your support of that item as well.
Absolutely. Let's hope for the best there.
Yeah, that's right.
Jenny Morahan? Jenny?
Hi, Mayor. I was just accepted in. Good evening again, and hi Commissioners and City officials as well. You know, tonight's actually an exciting milestone because we're finally talking about seeing some motion with the One Stop site after really discussing its potential for the past 20 years. And it's exciting because having this on the agenda really signals that our downtown's primed for more investment and, and parks and developments and hopefully in successful public-private partnerships as well. And the DDA, you know, we have obviously a long history of pursuing these great P3s and collaborating with the city and the community. And we have some amazing destinations downtown because of that over the years, including the Broward Center, thanks Kelly, and MODS and Riverwalk Center Garage. And, and today, really, we have the opportunity and a necessity to think about how publicly-owned land and uses on public-owned land can be beneficial in ways we've never thought about before. So what we've done at the DDA about a year ago is brought in experts from the Urban Land Institute to really help give us all some guidance on how we can create some incredible, vibrant, dynamic parks and urban plazas in downtown. And the panel talked about the importance of these kind of creative partnerships to really design, build, finance, program, and operate and maintain these spaces. And so recently, my board here at the DDA, we've committed to a total reimagining of our most important asset, Hyzina Plaza. And with that, we've looked at successful urban park precedents around the country, and they all share the same keys to success. You know, it's early deliberate planning focusing with extensive stakeholder engagement. Almost all of the most successful newer parks and even long-term parks around the country have an organization separate from the city that exclusively focuses on those downtown parks. And they do that with a sustainable business model and hundreds of events and types and scales. So while we don't know the details of this proposal, you know, we're hopeful that these successful kind of precedents get incorporated into the planning for the One Stop site. And it's certainly our intention to do the same for Hyzina Plaza. We did submit a resolution, and in that resolution, we asked you all and the city as a whole to really hold more extensive public engagement as this unsolicited proposal's evaluated, to incorporate the recommendations of the ULI panel into our downtown parks planning and any investments, whether it be the bonds, the bond, parks, bond funding, or any other kind of park planning. And really, as we look at One Stop Shop, to see it as a catalyst for a bigger vision for this area, you know, to have a world-class urban public space and connect it in with the joint government campus that hopefully is on the horizon, to leverage all the investments that are happening with transportation and the mobility hub and all the development that's occurring and yet to come for Flagler Village in downtown. So we really believe that the city and, you know, the interested parties for the One Stop Shop have the responsibility, but also huge opportunity to engage the community, work with all of us to develop a common vision and really have an amazing destination that can lead downtown into the future. So, you know, just wanted to reiterate that the DDA is looking to help be leaders with investments downtown and to the degree that for any other proposals should include a park space, we would. we would love to be part of that public engagement and work together for these amazing destinations downtown.
All right, great. Mayor? Thank you so much, yes.
I have a question concerning something that Jenny actually just said, and maybe Alan, you can tell us when this would be appropriate. But like we did with Lockhart, I would like to get this out of the shade as soon as possible with hopefully the applicant's agreement to that. Because then, yes, I definitely think we do need to open this up. We need to vet it much more with the public, with the neighborhood. I've been in close contact with Flagler Village Civic Association on this. And we do need to get this out of the shade so we can discuss like what we were starting to discuss before, some of the details that Kelly mentioned, et cetera, et cetera. Because that even came up last night in my pre-agenda meeting with regards to a potential negative impact on the Broward Center, but I think Kelly did clear that up for us today, so I feel good about that. But Alan, how quickly can we get this out of the shade? And then I also wanted to address the resolution because I do feel that the 21 days in the resolution is too short a time. I know we have between 21 and 120 days to consider this. But I certainly think that we need to look at not 21, it's way too short, but 60 is fine. That gets us to the beginning of December before the end of the year. And I would feel comfortable with 60 days versus 21. But Alan, how do we get this out of the shade as quickly as possible?
The soonest you can get this out of the shade is after the competitive process that you would be initiating this evening, which would be once all the proposals are received within the timeframe you choose. And I'll address that real quick, the 21 days that are in the resolution, the proposed resolution, was really a placeholder, it should have been a blank, it's just we put 21 days in there. But the City Commission needs to select that timeframe this evening. But the shade is not removed until such time as those competing, if any, proposals come in and then are evaluated.
So we would have to wait till whatever the timetable is that we establish for any other proposals to come forward before we then opened it all up to the shade? And we can't open it up just for this one proposal right now?
Well, but Vice Mayor, remember, we've had this discussion, the applicant can reveal the details, but we can't.
I understand, and that's okay, Alan, the applicant can just...
We can't control what the applicant does, but what it does is it taints the project, it taints the process. If you look at the statute, it's not may be exempt, it is exempt. And when you look, this was amended back in 2016, and if you look at the legislative explanation on your intent, they considered it to be a public necessity for the exemption to apply in these processes and actually refers to it as a prohibition from disclosure. So although the city can't forbid the applicant from, or the proposer from talking about their project in the public, it does taint the project, the process. And any subsequent proposers, for example, that would come in would feel compelled to reveal the same amount, if not more, of their product during that process. And at the end of the day, if that statute has not been followed with regards to the exemption and someone inevitably loses because they're not ranked and not chosen, you subject the whole process as well as the project to litigation and starting back from square one. So it's really, it's not something that the applicant or the proposer can waive. And it's not for the city really to waive, the intent of the statute is for it to be adhered through, throughout the solicitation process.
Thank you, well, with that information then, Mayor, I would say we don't want them to go ahead and start just revealing that because then I would be nervous about tainting of the process like that. But then again, on the flip side, that would make me want to have a less time. And I would probably say, well, not 60 days now, I would want to say maybe 45 or even 30 days for other people to come in. So the quicker that we can get all proposals out there, out of the shade, the better. That's how I feel, thank you.
Okay, um. All right, well, the thing is that, first of all, we have to, let's have a discussion about what this is, what it is that we're being asked to vote on, for the public to know. This is a, what's called an unsolicited proposal. And the unsolicited proposal is basically an applicant who is asking the city to review a proposal to develop the site known as, commonly known as the One Stop Shop, which is approximately a three-acre site just to the west of City Hall today. And this, this application is presented to the city not to, we're not here to vote on for or against the proposal, it's simply to accept it. And then we're going to take the next number of days in which to review it and make a determination whether or not we want to accept or reject it. By accepting it tonight, we are not accepting, we're not voting on whether we approve it or not. We're just, it's being tendered to us and we're accepting its tender. They are paying $25,000 to the city to cover our costs. They are paying $25,000 to the city to cover our costs for staff to review, to review the project. If we spend less time reviewing it, there's no refund on the difference in the amount of money. It's non-refundable. So the point of accepting this tonight is because we don't know what we don't know. We don't know what they're presenting. So it's important for us to at least review what the proposal is, and then we can either accept it or reject it. We do have the opportunity to speak with our constituents, do we not?
Well, let me, let me just correct that because what you're actually doing tonight is you have reviewed the project, we've gone through that stage already. What you're doing tonight with this resolution is you're first determining that it is, it has been reviewed, that it is a qualifying project, that it serves a public purpose and it's going to be used by the public at large, and that you intend to enter into a comprehensive agreement for this project. So that's what you're declaring tonight.
But we don't have to.
You do, that's what your resolution is.
We do not have to approve it.
You don't have to enter into a comprehensive agreement. You don't have to, you don't have to enter into a comprehensive agreement with them at the end of the day. But tonight, what you're saying is it is your intent to enter into an agreement with them. But in order to do that, you have to start the solicitation process. But it is a determination that you have reviewed it, you find it acceptable and something the city is interested in, in that it serves the public purpose and is a qualifying project. And then because of that, your intention is to go forward with it. But now you're opening up to the opening, to the solicitation process that's required under the statute.
Right, but in the end, we're not, we're keeping the option open of not accepting it if we choose not to.
Correct, it is not set in stone until a comprehensive agreement is, the solicitation process is over and then a comprehensive agreement is actually entered into.
Right. Did everyone on the commission understand that?
I do, but I have questions and comments whenever you're ready.
We'll get to that in just a second. So, so first of all, we have to, when we, at the end of this discussion, we have to make a decision as to the number of days we want to leave the window open for other proponents to submit theirs. I would, I would prefer a longer period than a shorter period. I don't believe the 21 days makes any sense, but I think 60 days is more appropriate. It gives other competing applicants some time to put together something, which is a very complex proposal. We've all seen this proposal and it has many complicated features, more of which I would like to delve into as we, as we have this period of time in which to do it. But let's go from Commissioner to Commissioner, Commissioner Moritas, please, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So Alan, if we did vote to accept this unsolicited proposal, and then after the period of time, let's say it was 60 days, we opened it up and we're starting to discuss it, is the community able to give input at that point and make changes to this project? Or, I mean, how, how can we get community input and make changes?
Community input doesn't come into play until after, as you correctly stated, after the solicitation process is over. So let's say we provide 60 days, we get new proposals in, those proposals have to be vetted. And at some point, once they're fully vetted and the city is intending on, is declaring that we want to make a decision on these, then that opens it up to the public. And then those three, four, however many projects we get, then can be fully vetted. And then you can talk to your constituents about it and have more input there. As to how much the project can change, that's difficult to tell. Because if it changes too much, then it's no longer the project that was initially proposed and/or also not the one that was competed with and ranked. So if you have a project that's A, and then it goes through so many changes and you've ranked it, you know, we want project A, and it changes so much, then all of a sudden, at the end of the day, it's really project B, that's not fair to the competitive process. It's just like a bid, when you put a bid out there, you can't change the bid at the end of the game because then it's unfair to everybody else that was in the process. So there can be obviously a little bit of tweaking, but the substance of the project has to substantially remain the same.
So, so just to follow up on that, so at the, let's say we pick 60 days. At the end of 60 days, we don't have to accept or reject within that 60-day period. It comes after that 60-day period that we make that decision, is that correct?
Correct, so if you get additional projects beyond this one, you're going to have to rank them. At some point, if we, you know, accept and we're going to review, staff has to review, there's a certain amount of review that's required under the statute, then you're going to rank, let's say we have three, you're going to rank those.
And that's the time we can go out into the public and get feedback?
Correct.
Okay, does that answer your question, Commissioner Moritas?
It answers it, but what Alan is saying, I have to accept most of what one of these projects will bring to me. I can't say I'm going to go out and do six months of community outreach and we're going to substantially change a project and then accept that project as amended. I am saying, when I'm ranking, I'm going to accept pretty much some of these unsolicited proposals, or one of these unsolicited proposals. So I feel like it's limiting the community input. Even if we say we'll do community input for a year, it's, we can't really change the project substantially because we are being presented an unsolicited project to accept or deny. Like, just give me a few minutes to get my thoughts out. Okay, another question, Alan, how much money do we have from our parks bond to spend if we chose to keep this as a park and just the city were to do something with it? How much money do we have? Does anyone know?
That's a better question for the city manager, I don't know how much, within the district, how much would be left for, it's not acquisition, obviously, it's our own property, but I don't know exactly how much would be left.
Yeah, so is the question, would there be funds available to develop it into a more formalized park? Is that the question?
Yes, based on our park bond that we have, you know, that we took, do we have any money that we could use towards this parcel of land?
So it would be one of those things, we'd have to obviously know what we were going to build, we'd have to design it, then go to the Parks and Rec Beaches Advisory Board and seek approval for the use of funds in that manner. And then it comes to the commission after that. So I don't have a number that I can throw out and give to you tonight, but we would have to decide what we wanted to build and then we'd have to pursue that process.
Okay, but it does fall under the, we are allowed to use park bond money to build it, just like we did with Tunneltop Park and it went from $5 million to $10 million. We have some park bond money to develop.
If it's determined to be a park, park bond funds would be, that's an eligible use of those funds.
Okay, so we can use our own money. So we don't necessarily have to go with a P3, even though I do think a P3 could make sense in this space. We do have some money if we choose not to do that. Okay, I just want to talk a little bit, when you, when we compare it to Lockhart. So I think the thing that's different for me about Lockhart, you know, that wasn't unsolicited proposal and it worked out well, everything. But you know, we had 20 acres where the city could take the 20 acres and do what we wanted with it. We, I've spent almost a year now on community outreach, we'll probably spend another year on community outreach to get what we want on that space. So even though, you know, this may be an unsolicited, it's different than Lockhart because we're kind of just accepting whatever a person brings to us without adding in the ability to say, we want this space and we want community outreach to design this space. So where I'm going with this is, I think it would be better, and I don't know if this is the correct language, so help me, Chris or Alan, if we had a P3 possibly, but it was solicited, where we set what we wanted, we went out to the community and did outreach for a year or so, and then we came back and then someone could bid on what we want. Is that the correct process for a solicited P3? Am I making sense?
Yes, if, you're correct, Commissioner, if you want a P3 to proceed there, but you want to put out criteria as this is what the city wants, that would be, as you correctly stated, a solicited proposal, which you can do as a public-private partnership. A P3 isn't necessarily unsolicited, that's just one form, so you can certainly solicit one. If the city chooses to have a particular plan or design or intention for that property, you can do it as a P3 through a solicited process.
Okay, and during that process, Alan, I am allowed to build into it community outreach to help design it, right?
Correct, the only time that you take it, the only time it would get into the shade again would be once you've, once you've, once the city's come up with a design criteria as to what it wants. And then it becomes competitive and we put it out there for people to respond. At that point, those responses obviously would be in the shade, it would be protected through that process.
Okay.
So that time, you're correct.
Okay, so for a year, I mean, we have three acres, it's our last three acres downtown. We already kind of fought off the courthouse and won. So for a year, we could just go out to the community, like I said, like I've done for the past year in District One, and keep saying, what do you want, what do you want, what do you want? And it does keep changing, you know, and keeps getting better. The more input we get, the better it gets. I'm going to say it again, I do, I do like what I've seen with this P3. I do think we have, I don't, I don't, I don't want to rush this. I think this is a gem in our downtown. And I think we really need to get a lot of community outreach. Am I allowed to say one thing that I think is important to have on this property? Am I allowed to say that?
Go ahead.
Okay, I think we need to have three acres of park space. So that, that's what, that's what I think. So however we get there is what I'm willing to evaluate and look at. But I'm not giving up one inch of park space. So I want three acres, and I think we can be creative with what it looks like on Level 2, 3, 4, or whatever. But I need three acres of park space. So I also need community outreach, I need community input, and it's really fun to go through. And I, that's where I stand, thank you.
Okay, based on what you, based on your responses to Commissioner Moritas, does the applicant box themselves in if, at the end of the, say, 60 days, we bring it out to the community and the community has input and there's some recognizable and commendable modifications that maybe everyone would agree to? But can the applicant make those changes or are they boxed into what they originally proposed?
You're, I'm going to give you a lawyer answer, it depends. It depends how substantial that change would be, obviously. If it changes the character of the project or the competitiveness with the other projects, then obviously, if you, if you rank one over the others and then start making changes where you substantially change that project, then it's just like changing a bid. So it depends on what kind of changes it would be and how drastically of a change it is.
So is it like 51%, 49%, 33%? I mean, is there, is there a sliding scale of change that is?
No, it's completely subjective. I mean, if it's a matter of, you know, a project says I'm going to have 50 parking spaces and they say, well, let's add another five, not a big deal, right? That doesn't change the nature of the concept. But if you're saying you're going to have Building A, Building B, and Building C, but then you decide, no, let's just have Building A and no others, then that's a completely different project.
Okay, all right, did you have any more questions, Commissioner Moritas?
No, but I just want you all to be clear, kind of how I, what my final thought is, I think it's probably best in this scenario to go for a solicited P3 as opposed to an unsolicited. Just, and I, we could even end up with this project, just tweaks a little bit. But I would feel better just having a solicited P3, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor? Are you with us?
Yes, I'm unmuting myself, thank you, Mayor. I still have not been able to get the volume going, I'm sorry, the audio, the video, whatever. Again, I have a lot of questions that I would love to ask the city manager and city attorney, but then I'm going to be going into details of this project, so I'm afraid to go there. So this is really difficult. I don't know if we can't get there through the unsolicited proposal and get what we want like we did with Lockhart. Commissioner Moritas worked very closely with her district on that. I'd like to be able to do the same in my district that she did in her district. So I, again, I can't get into a lot of these details right now because the city attorney is saying we can't do that. But again, I do think that we might be able to get there if we give this the 60 days. But again, I, I do think that we might be able to get there if we give this the 60 days because I think other proposals will come forward. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Lockhart end result is so different than what we first saw when we did get the unsolicited proposal. I mean, we were able.
That was an artist's rendering, right? That was an artist's rendering.
Right. But what I'm saying is what's actually happened on that site, isn't that quite different from what we first saw when we did see the two presentations that were given to us?
You want to answer that, Alan?
Well, the concept, I mean, obviously you are privy to it, the, the concept never really changed. The concepts stayed the same. Again, Inter Miami and that whole P3 was a very unique, I want to call it a one-off. I mean, it was a very unique opportunity. It's one of those once in a lifetime type things. But from, from, from concept to reality, sure, there's always tweaks and there's architectural changes. And, you know, you may add some seating here and some seating there, but generally the concept remained the same, that there was going to be the, the large stadium as well as some fields that were going to be provided for public use. So the, the, again, the, the general concept stayed the same. And then same thing could be with, with a project for one-stop shop. Again, it, it's subjective and it would depend on what type of changes you're making.
Yeah. And again, I, I mean, I feel confident that we can get to where we need to go. I mean, I know of many beautiful parks throughout the world that do have a building in it. I'm not that concerned with it. If, if we are going to be able to say this is a gorgeous park at the end of the day. I mean, I do have other concerns in terms of cost to the city. I have term, I have concerns in terms of maintaining the site. I think we can actually get to what we want for that site and everyone comes out a winner through the process we've established if we give this time. Again, I'm not sure if we get to a different result, if we change the process at this point, but I leave that up to Alan. What do you think, Alan? I mean, are we able to make this process work for us in terms of what it is we want on this site so that we do have our open space and the city is not going to have to manage this site and the city's not going to have to, you know, spend a lot of money? I know that Commissioner Maritas asked about the parks bond, but this was never a signature project, so I'm a little nervous about that because I think that each of our districts, there's $30 million for land acquisition, but we already have that. So I don't know.
Can I answer, can I help you out here, Commissioner, Vice Mayor? I think a similar, an analogy might be made with War Memorial Auditorium. Because there we have another entity coming in there and doing the rehabilitation of a site, still maintaining the, the public purpose there and all done on someone else's dime.
Right.
So, so to answer your question, can we get where we want to go with accepting the unsolicited proposal? I think we can. And after the 60 days, that's when the public participation can kick in. And so I think we can feel comfortable in knowing that we're going to be able to listen to our, our constituents and to have them participate in the process. I think there's been enough discussion in the last year or so on this, on this proposal. It's been out there. People have talked about it. They've seen it. The applicant has, has, has taken it around town and shown folks. So it's not like it's, it's, anyone's going to be surprised at what they're going to see. But I think after the 60 days, we can massage it, much like they did at Lockhart. And, and so I think to answer your, I, I mean, if, I know you didn't ask me the question, but I'm just trying to help us both through this process here. I think that if we likened it to what we did with War Memorial, we ended up with a, with a result that I think is where we wanted to all get to. Alan, did you want to say anything else?
No, I wasn't going to answer the question actually. So you did just fine. Thank you.
No, and I, and I agree with you, Mayor. Again, this would be, I don't know where we would have this in our park bond in terms of allocation, because I know it's not one of our four signature projects. We wouldn't have to spend money to acquire the land because we have it. So that's a good thing. But it certainly would be quite a bit of money, I think, for us to actually do this all on our own or to actually maintain it, manage it, et cetera, et cetera. So I also do agree that I think that we can get to where we need to go through this process.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner McKenzie?
I concur with Mayor and Vice Mayor. I think we let it unfold as we did with Lockhart. And I think we can work the other issues or concerns out along the way. We have to let the horse out of the barn.
Okay. All right. And Commissioner Sorensen?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I concur. I concur with Commissioner McKenzie, Vice Mayor, you. I think we, I don't think we box ourselves into any significant major limitation that's going to be a challenge, a major challenge for us. And I think this helps us get it for public engagement.
Okay.
I, I, there's, I just want to check, someone's trying to speak and I don't know if they've signed up or.
Well, there are, there are several people who've signed up to speak. I, I wanted to first give you folks the, well, actually the people that want to speak have already spoken. Is there somebody else that wants to speak?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Alan Hooper.
Yep. There you go. Thanks.
This was a, a late entry into the speaker role. So Mr. Hooper, are you on the line?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Good evening, Mr. Hooper.
How are you doing?
Good. You have three minutes.
Okay. I, I, I think that this process, that we're, that we're in the middle of a COVID pandemic. We had a meeting with the Flagler Village Civic Association in which Commissioner Glassman was there. And it was basically a muted blogging your concerns meeting. It didn't allow the neighborhood and, and participants to speak their voice and it was quite muted. And I think that this process here being in the dark is a little too shady for when you're dealing with a prime piece of real estate like this one. This thing's worth about 36 million bucks. And I don't think we're treating it with the value that it has, not only from a real estate perspective, but from a value to our city and to our citizens. It's a public piece of property. It deserves neighborhood input. And this P3, the way it's written says that it has to be the same project that comes back, that these other bidders would have to come in with the same project and that you do intend to do a deal for this type of project. I, I just developed a project in Tallahassee and, and it's, it's for students, so it's okay. But I have an apartment there. And when the, the businesses close at 3:00 AM, the noises, the, there's a lot of things that are going to affect the neighbors. And we're not thinking through this completely and we haven't vetted it completely. And I don't think the neighborhood is going to, you're going to get into a 50-year deal or longer. I don't even know what the financial details are. We don't know any of the details, but yet the, the neighborhood is being, is just going to have to accept the fact that in about 60 or 120 days, we're going to have a vetted project on that site. That the neighborhood had very little to say about it. So I think it's a, I, I don't really appreciate the process. I think an RFP would have been a, a more trustworthy way to do it and it would have gotten more bids. I mean, here we are trying to get something great that is a cultural activity, yet we're, we're boxing it into one particular type of use. It says, it just doesn't seem right, especially when we've waited 10 years for this, 20 years for this. Not to mention the fact that the neighborhood a year ago fought the federal courthouse. If that's not a public need, I don't know what is. And they fought the public, the, the federal courthouse to go to south of the river. Why? Because they wanted to park on that site. And you heard the city, the citizens loud and clear and all of a sudden, what, what are we cleaning hemorrhage? It's so that we can move it over to Flagler Village? So are we, is that what we're doing? Are we moving what was in hemorrhage over to Flagler Village? Have we asked Flagler Village neighborhood, neighbors how they feel about that? I think you need to open this up to the sunshine a lot more because I just don't think it's right the way this is being done and it's not fair to the neighbors of Flagler Village.
All right. Well, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Is there anyone else who is, okay, so I'd like to, I think we need to close public hearing, correct?
It's not really. No, it's just.
Okay. All right. All right. So would someone like to introduce the resolution for or against?
And then we have to determine the timeframe as well.
I'm sorry?
And we have to determine the timeframe as well.
Okay. So whoever introduces the resolution would have to recommend a timeframe. I personally would like to see 60 days, but I mean, whoever introduces the resolution, please make your recommendation.
Introduced for 60 days.
Case been introduced. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and the resolution is approved.
Yeah, yeah. A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project described in an unsolicited proposal for the city owned land pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same qualified project and providing for an effective date. So let's vote again. And it was introduced by Commissioner Sorensen. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
No.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes. And so the resolution is approved. Again, you know, hearing Mr. Hooper's concerns, I, I feel that, I happen to know that this project has been brought to the Neighborhood Association multiple times. It has been brought to the commissioners multiple times. And it will be brought back to the community after the 60 days. So I feel that we are, we will well-vet this proposal and, and I welcome other proposals to step forward in the next two months. And let's hope that we see something really good. Otherwise, you know, this decision will be made at a later time, but tonight begins the process. So.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if at the end of the day, we're not happy with the public process or the vetting or the way this project ends up, we do not have to move forward with it, correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. So R3, this is a quasi judicial resolution approving plat known as 1620 North Federal Highway. It's being proposed by 220145 LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commissioner will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Do you have any disclosures to make, Commissioner Maritas?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
And Commissioner Sorensen?
No.
I know that I've met with the applicant and I, I live in the area, so I've seen the site every day. So other than that, I have no further disclosures. I do have. Nope. No one has signed up to speak on this. So do I hear a motion to close public hearing? It's been moved?
Seconded.
It was seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced. And Commissioner Sorensen, that's a resolution to approve the plat? Correct. Thank you. A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a plat entitled 1620 North Federal Highway and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes. So it's our understanding that we've just approved the plat, but they still have to come forward with the site plan, correct? Okay. All right. Just as an aside, I know on the camera, it looks, you have my, you have my head and above my head, you have In God We Trust. I just want people to know there's no direct correlation between the Almighty of myself, except I accept his blessings. Moving on to PH1, this is a public hearing and adoption of resolution approving the Parks, Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board's recommendation for approval of land purchase of 1016 Waverly Road as provided in the Parks and Recreation Bond Resolutions. We have several people who've signed to speak up. We have Bob Swindell. Bob, are you on the line?
Thank you very much, Mayor Trentellus. My name is Bob Swindell, 432 Charlie Avenue. I just wanted to thank Vice Mayor Glassman, you, Mayor Trentellus, the commission and city manager Lager Blum for considering this purchase with the Bonds Park. I've lived in southwest Fort Lauderdale for over 23 years, Nudist Elbow Bend. I've always admired the area and I know the neighborhood appreciates the investment of park bond, bond dollars. You know, we also know the scarcity of riverfront land and it's a great opportunity to have undeveloped land in a residential area for the residents. With the two acres adjacent to Major Lauderdale Park presents a great opportunity for the neighborhood and it offers an amazing view of the Snow Reed Swing Bridge. So thanks, Commissioners, and I fully support the purchase.
Okay. Thank you. We now have Patricia Ziler. Patricia, are you there? Patricia? Pat? Is she not there?
I saw her earlier, but I do not see her now.
While we're looking for, for Pat, how about Ken Krasnow? Ken, is this just for answering any questions?
It's guest. Hello?
Hi, Ken. Are you just here to answer questions?
Yes, I'm available if there are any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Is Pat Ziler?
Haven't seen her again.
Okay.
She's on the phone.
Can she suggest what the last four numbers to her phone are?
Let's see.
We have two call-in users, but I don't want to give out the whole number if she happens to be last 402835804.
We're waiting for the answer. But I should tell us a joke, Vice Mayor.
I wouldn't know where to begin.
Okay. 5804, I think, Chris.
5804, that's, okay, we'll try that one. 5804. Pat, is that you? The number's been recognized, but she has to unmute on her end.
All right. Unmute on your end. That's a, Chris, that's star six, right?
That's worked as well. There we go. Star six.
Okay. I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the line.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is a big thank you for considering this project. Just clarifying that the property itself is the most significant archaeological site left on the New River. It represents a really important historical piece of our town before any of us were here when the First Nation people occupied the New River. So thank you for taking this up. It's an incredibly important piece. Bob Carr of the Miami Circle, archaeologist, likens this to our Fort Lauderdale Miami Circle.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. So is there anyone else who's, wishes to speak on PH1? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
If I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Anyone have any comments or questions regarding this? I know we discussed it at length in previous meeting. If none, does someone like to introduce the resolution?
Mayor, I do have some comments.
Yes.
Thank you. As you know, the last time this came before us, I was actually saying, not at this moment, because we needed to go back to the neighborhood, because there was some discussion earlier, some people thought they were going to get a very active site, a very active park, so I wanted to make sure that the neighborhood knew exactly what kind of site this was, and what we could do on this site, and what we could not do. That seems to have been put to bed, and the neighborhood now understands exactly what can and cannot happen on this site because of what Patricia Zylar just said, being the most archaeological significant site on the New River today. That being said, I am in favor of this purchase, but I've also had conversations, and by the way, I know the neighborhood did submit a letter of support, and I think that's terrific. I do have some concerns. I know that the neighbors adjacent to the site on both sides have some concerns, and I think they're very valid, and I want to make sure that if we do go forward with this purchase, that the city will be able to work with these owners on both sides of the site. We did receive a letter from one of the owners, and I did submit that to the city attorney, because I think the proposals for letting these owners enter into either a purchase or a long-term rental agreement, almost as if it's an easement for the bordering properties of about 25-foot, as a buffer zone on both sides, makes a heck of a lot of sense. And I want to make sure that the city attorney thinks that that's something that's doable, and that we can work towards, and that we can accomplish that. I think that would be really important to protect those owners because of that proximity, and for a variety of reasons, as stated in the letters that I've received from both neighbors on both sides of this particular site. In addition to that, as I mentioned earlier today, I would love to see us give direction to city staff to pursue what it would take, and it would not probably take much to get this on the National Register of Historic Places, and also to locally designate it, because that would make sense to protect the property, and then also to signal to the rest of the country, and actually the world, what a significant site this is, because of the import being on the National Register would give this particular site. So those are my concerns, those are my asks in terms of us giving direction to staff, but also to support the neighborhood's desire to move forward with this site and this purchase, while at the same time, making sure that we do everything that we can to protect the immediate neighbors adjacent on both sides of the park. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, let me respond to that. I think that, you know, going into this, we have to go into it, you know, with eyes wide open. We are, you know, I think that we are very eager to try to find, you know, pocket parks like this. Having this opportunity to buy land on water is important. I do understand it's a sensitive area, I'm not sure, you know, where it falls in the scale of 1 to 10 of its importance historically, but what you're suggesting about setting aside a 25-foot easement on either side is 50 feet, and this site is about 400 feet wide. So what you're saying is you want to deny the public almost 15% of the land, and we're paying $2.5 million for this, so it diminishes the value of the land to the city by even making that suggestion. I do think that we do owe the adjacent property owners some measure of mitigation to minimize the, you know, whatever negative impact that might, they might fear or risk, should this be open to the public, but, and we can talk about that, but, you know, buying this today, but no one's making any promises, I just want, you know, everyone to know that.
And by the way, Mayor, I throw that out, because that's the language that was used in the letter that was sent to us from one of the owners, the 25 feet, that's not set in stone by all means, and I think that's something that could be worked out, I'm more concerned with just giving some sort of a buffer, so it's just not right up to the property line, because actually, the public will be most likely not able to utilize much of this site, because if it's done correctly with the midden, you'd have to have elevated walkways, you'd have to have very carefully laid out places where the ground would not be disturbed, so there will be a good portion of the two acres that will not be able to really be fully utilized. So a small buffer on either side would not be that much more dramatic of a loss of space as will obviously just occur because of the fact that this is a midden.
Right, I understand, and I think we're here to protect everybody's property interests at the same time to provide the public with an open access to the waterway with an open space. You know, on Tarpon River, we have another park, and the adjacent property owners, you know, enjoy the full benefit of the value and the appreciation of their property, we've never had a problem, and so I don't really anticipate one here either. So anyway, if there's no further discussion, I think we've already approved it, correct? We've already taken a vote on this, Mr. Clerk?
No, we haven't.
We have not, so let's move forward with the vote.
We just need someone to introduce it.
Is somebody, I think it was the introduced?
It's a public hearing, so you may want to close the public.
It was just a public hearing?
No, well, it's a public hearing and adoption of a resolution. You're, right now, you're just approving the park.
We closed public hearing, now someone needs to introduce the resolution approving or disapproving the purchase of the park.
No, this is just the recommendation from the board, the next item is the actual purchase.
Okay, this is to whether or not to approve the recommendation of the board. Someone like to introduce that resolution?
Introduce.
Thank you.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the recommendation of the Parks Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board for the property acquisition located at 1016 Waverly Road, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33312, as provided for in-bond resolution number 20-08, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. We move on to public hearing two, this is a motion approving the purchase and sale for real property located at 1016 Waverly Road, under the Parks Bond, for $2,540,000. Other than Mr. Swindell and Mr. Krasnow, we have Ruth Clark. Gentlemen, did you want to speak in addition, or are your remarks applicable to this item as well? I assume, is there anything additional? Mr. Swindell, is there anything additional you wanted to add? Is he on the line?
Do not see that he...
Did he check out?
Still with us, hang on, let me look. I, his name is, is he still there?
Thank you, Mayor, I made my remarks with public hearing one, I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, great, thank you. Ruth Clark, Ruth, are you on the line?
Hello?
Hello, Ruth?
Hello, Mayor Trentalis.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you, hello, everyone, I'm great, I'm really pleased to see that this motion is back before the commission. We worked very hard with the Civic Association, talking to all the members, having a survey, voting unanimously to support the purchase of the property, engaging with Phil Formberg from Parks, and also with the neighbors who did come, well, at least two of them came to our meeting, and I've corresponded with them ever since, and in fact, one of the neighbors has already volunteered to be on the committee that talks about developing the park, so with that, I'll leave it up to you, we're very excited about this possibility, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Someone like to move to close public hearing? Hello?
Moved.
Commissioner Sorensen moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed, would someone like to introduce the, no, someone like to move the item?
Moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Mayor, one quick question for Chris, what does he need to move forward with actually looking at local designation and National Register of Historic Places designation?
We are prepared to do that, beginning immediately, would just ask for that direction to be given by the commission.
And how do you need that direction?
If you wanted to add it to this action you're taking right now, that would be sufficient.
Mayor, how does everyone feel? Well, we're already voting on this, so let's complete the voting, and then I will entertain your request.
Thank you. My vote is yes on the purchase.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, so the motion is approved, now, Vice Mayor, what is it you're asking?
I believe it's very important now, especially that we are going to purchase this site, that we do what we can as a city to locally designate it, and also apply for the National Register of Historic Places. I believe it already is listed on the Florida Master Site File, so that's okay, and that's already taken care of statewide, but we really should designate it locally and apply to the National Register.
Okay, I don't think you need any action on the part of the commission, I think that can be a ministerial task, and our staff could certainly make that application.
Well, Chris just said he wanted direction from the commission.
It's sufficiently on the agenda, or it's sufficiently been discussed, unless there's objection, we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
To that?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, PH3, it's a public hearing, resolution granting a waiver of limitations at 1801 Southeast 7th Street for the installation of a fixed pier, two boat lifts, and two triple pile mooring clusters, that's in Commission District 4. We have Tyler Chappelle here to speak, I guess, if there are any questions. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? There being none, do we have to close public hearing? Do I hear motion to close public hearing?
So moved, second.
Seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? Please call the roll.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, granting a waiver of limitations to Section 47-19.3C and D, to permit Kirk D. Zimmerman, a successor trustee of the CRKH Trust under agreement dated November 3, 2006, as to undivided one-half interest, and Patricia A. Houli as successor trustee of the CRKW Trust, under agreement dated November 3, 2006, as to the undivided one-half interest, to install one fixed finger pier, one 30,000-pound non-profile boat lift, one 4,000-pound boat lift, and the reinstallation of two triple pile mooring clusters that will extend a maximum of plus minus 52 feet from the property line into the waterway, such property being located at 1801 Southeast 7th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33316, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is approved. One second. Okay. Moving on to PH4. Now, PH4, 5, and 6, Adam, is it Adam Lick? He has signed up for each one, I assume he's here just to respond to questions. Adam, do you have any other thing, anything else you'd like to add, or are you just here to respond to questions? Adam, are you on the line?
He's been recognized, he just needs to unmute himself, star six, Adam.
Hi, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, are you just here to respond to questions?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So no one else has signed up to speak, would someone like to move to close public hearing on PH4?
Moved.
Second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so seconded, close public hearing on PH4, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on PH4, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, granting a waiver of limitations of 47-19.3C to permit Richard Goran Bowles and Lilian Nigüera Bowles, husband and wife, to install one four-post boat lift that will extend a maximum of plus minus 30 feet from the property line into the waterway, such property being located at 1180 North Federal Highway, Unit Number 609, Slip Number 4, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33304, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item is approved. PH5, public hearing, waiver of limitations at 1180 North Federal Highway, Unit 1106, Slip 19, for the installation of a four-post boat lift. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed on PH5, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution, the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, granting a waiver of limitations to Section 47-19.3C to permit REVA 1106 LLC, a Florida limited liability company, to install one four-post boat lift that will extend a maximum of plus minus 30 feet from the property line into the waterway, such property being located at 1180 North Federal Highway, Unit Number 1106, Slip Number 19, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33304, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen? Commissioner Moritas? I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Moritas, are you there?
That's a yes, right? Okay. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and PH4 is approved, PH6, actually, PH5 is approved. PH6, public hearing, resolution granting a waiver of limitations at 1180 North Federal Highway, Unit 408, Slip 17, for the installation of a four-post boat lift. Someone like to introduce a motion to close public hearing?
Introduced.
Second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, public hearing is now closed, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Section 47-19.3E of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale granting a waiver of the limitations of Section 47-19.3C to permit Scott Rappaport to install one four-post boat lift that will extend a maximum of plus-minus 33 feet from property line into the waterway, such property being located at 1180 North Federal Highway, Unit Number 408, Slip Number 17, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33304, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Commissioner Moritas?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a yes, right? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the resolution is now approved. Moving on to OFR 1, this is a first reading ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale general employees retirement system. We have Mr. Lockery, who is, Mr. Lockery, has signed up to speak with regard to this item. Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is OFR. He signed up for OSR, so no one has signed up to speak on this. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
An ordinance to the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the City of Fort Lauderdale general employees retirement plan to implement the collective bargaining agreements between the city and the Federation of Public Employees and Teamsters Local Union 769, amending Sections 20-106 and 20-108.1 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to give planned members the option to continue participating in the general employees retirement plan or join the Florida retirement system and provide a procedure for member elections respectively and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. Sorry, Mr. Lockery, I thought she took a sudden interest in the retirement system. Now, OSR 1, this is a second reading, quasi judicial ordinance vacating the right-of-way identified as a 50-foot wide by 130-foot long roadway between Southeast 3rd Avenue and South Federal Highway known as Southeast 4th Avenue. This is by Innatec Properties LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any additional disclosures?
No new disclosures.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing new, thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
And I have no additional disclosures. I think Mr. Lockery's probably signed up just to respond to any questions. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant here for just questions.
Okay, great. Any questions of Mr. Lockery? There being none, someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on OSR 1. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
An ordinance vacating that portion of Southeast 4th Avenue, platted as Perkins Avenue, a 50-foot road right-of-way lying west and adjacent to Lot 13 Block 1 Lauderdale, according to the platter of its recorder in Plat Book 2, Page 9 of the public records of Dade County, Florida, and retaining a 50-foot public utility easement and a 24-foot public pedestrian access easement located north of the Tarpon River, south of Southeast 9th Court, east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, and west of Federal Highway. All said lands situate, lying, and being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading. We have OSR 2, quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from A1A Beachfront Area District, ABA, to Planned Development District, S PDD, with associated site plan approval for 215 multifamily residential units and 5150 square feet of retail and restaurant space and public parking. KT Seabreeze Atlantic Limited Partnership. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any additional disclosures?
Nothing new.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Nothing new.
Commissioner McKenzie?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
I have several people who've signed up to speak. I see Stephanie Toothacre, I assume that's just to respond to questions. Is Sarah Delnegré, that's also to respond to questions. I see she's here on behalf of Colter, which is the applicant. Blake? I have no, is it Blake Kidwell?
Yes.
Okay, that's just to respond to questions. And Bill Brown, are you on the line, Bill?
Good evening, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. I'll take less than 15 seconds, and I know it's been a long evening for you. I'm only here to address any questions or issues on the CBA's position since the first reading as they relate to this PDD. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brown, you have your, you have your city address is Indianapolis.
That was a typo. It was, it was auto-corrected, Phil, I'm sorry. It's my old address.
Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the public hearing is now closed on OSR 2. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
An ordinance amending Section 47-1.6. B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof so as to rezone from A1A Beachfront Area District to Planned Development District, all of lots 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and portions of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 14, and 15 Block 5, Lauderdale Mar, according to the platter of, recorded in Plat Book 7, Page 30 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located west of Seabreeze Boulevard, State Road A1A, north of Sebastian Street, east of North Birch Road, and south of Alhambra Street. All said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading. Good luck with the project. OSR 3, this is the second reading, ordinance amending Section 28-51 of the city's Code of Ordinances, permit classifications, application, deleting the existing fee for outside sanitary sewer service, construction permits, and providing reference to the new fee in Section 25-325, perenns I of the city's Code of Ordinances. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Does anyone have any additional disclosures? Commissioner Moritas?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
I don't even know if I had any disclosures on this one. Oops. Anyway, I have no new ones. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? No one has signed up to speak?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the public hearing is now closed on OSR 3. Do I hear someone introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending Chapter 28 Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater, Article 2, Division 3, Rates and Charges, Section 28-51, Permit Classifications, Application of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by deleting Permit Fee in 28-51BD, and Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, and an Effective Date. Commissioner McKenzie?
No.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading. Is there any further business of the commission?
The walk-on, right.
We have the walk-on.
So I can certainly start that presentation. It should go fairly quickly since we've talked about it. I just want to make sure that it's
Did you put the microphone up to you?
Just want to make sure that everything's on the record that needs to be on the record. Tonight, before you, in the form of a walk-on, is an amended consent order with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. That consent order existed for sewer discharges that were between 2014, I believe, and 2017, the one we had initially entered into. We're proposing tonight after negotiations with the state to amend that consent order to include and resolve the discharges that occurred between December the 10th, 2019, and February 14th of 2020. If you recall, when the department first came with an enforcement effort, they just brought a short form of the consent order which said, you know, this was the amount of discharge and it's equaled this amount of fine. The commission sought to negotiate with the department in hopes that we would be able to do a project, an in-kind project, in exchange for just paying a monetary fine, and I can tell you tonight that the item back before you does include that project, does include that project option. At this point, based upon the discharges that occurred between December 10th, 2019, and February 14th, 2020, if we were to elect to pay a cash penalty, that dollar figure is $2,111,500. Or if we choose to do it in-kind project, we'll have to propose a project that has a value of $3.167 million. We have several ideas as to projects that would qualify. After adopting the consent order, within 30 days, we'll make application to the state for one of those projects to qualify. This feels a little rushed, and the reason it feels a little rushed is we've been negotiating in good faith for some time, and the state approached us Friday and said that they thought we were at a document that needed to be presented to the commission, and that if it wasn't presented at our next meeting, that they would bring some other type of enforcement action against the city. So it was with that caution that it was brought forward in this afternoon's meeting as well as tonight, and it's before you tonight. I would seek your approval of it so we can move forward and put this one behind us and identify that project that we're going to submit and produce it to the state. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions with regard to this proposal? Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt what the city manager is proposing tonight?
Move to adopt.
How would you want to characterize?
It's a resolution actually approving the amended consent order and then providing the city manager designated, the city manager to execute.
And I would like to add one additional thing. So if somebody is willing to introduce the resolution, just because we learned about bringing this forward on Friday, I want to highlight that the dollars that are in the current budget and what is attached with this consent order so that we don't have something adopted that is underfunded. When we balanced the budget in 2020, we put in a fine placeholder in the amount of $1.8 million so that we would have that available should the department not move off their concept of us just paying a cash penalty. There was one additional discharge since that dollar figure was added in the budget, and that's what brings the difference between 1.8 million and $2,111,000. So if the resolution is introduced tonight, I would just like it to be introduced for approval subject to future appropriation to close that gap. If we were to have to choose to pay a cash penalty, but I really believe that we're going to be actively pursuing a project instead of doing that. So it would be a resolution subject to future appropriation.
Introduced, so stipulated.
Okay, so this is a resolution that we are giving the city manager the authority to define a project that is consistent with the State Department of Environmental Protection's consent order into which we previously entered, that would permit us to avoid avoid the fine and redirect the funds as, in such amount as they require in order to in order to spend the money on a, on a water rehabilitation project in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Is that kind of what we're doing tonight?
Absolutely, Mayor. You've summarized that well. The resolution authorizes me to pay the $5,000 administrative fee as well as enter into the amended consent order, and then we've already, we've already submitted some project ideas to DEP. They just won't agree to one until we take this first step, and then they'll, then they'll take those and review them. And we've gotten good feedback in that the projects seem to be qualifying, but they wanted this first step to happen before they'd be willing to commit.
Got that, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, and Chris, that's water and/or wastewater, is that right?
Well, so the waterways, it's in the waterways.
This one specifies environmental enhancement or environmental restoration projects. So we've got several good waterway projects that we believe are perfectly suitable that will enhance the the water quality in Fort Lauderdale. That's been a topic of much interest here lately, so it sort of naturally fits.
Great.
And that's your resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving an amended consent order with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, delegating to the city manager the authority to execute said agreement and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes, and I just want to thank city staff and the state. This is a great win-win in my eyes of how we can partner and improve our waterways, so thank you.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes, ditto, Commissioner Sorenson, yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the, that, what was it?
Resolution.
The resolution is approved. Is there any further business of the commission? Nothing? Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.